All right, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the high cities of America and to your love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The next meeting of our board is Tuesday, September—oh, sorry, backup. Any visitor or public comment? Just rolled right over that. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 16th, and happy holidays coming up. Great gift ideas, movie tickets, super saver tickets are available at Regal, Edward Theaters, and United Artists Theaters. Individual tickets are $9 each, and the ultimate ticket package includes two tickets and $10 gift certificate for $26. This is a real good deal, and you can get them through our administrative offices. Help build Kid's Castle by a commemorative brick—I'm going to speak really well tonight. They're $100, I think, and make a great—125, I believe so—and make a great Christmas gift. Minutes approval for our last meeting, November 18th. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns, considerations, changes? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Report from the solicitor.
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chief Person.
Chief?
Nothing.
You okay, then?
Yeah, nothing to report, thank you.
Township Engineers?
Two things this evening. First of all, the contractor for the 2014 road program has submitted their final payment application, and we've reviewed it, and we are recommendation that they be paid $13,643.75.
Is that in a proposal or packet? Is that information?
Mm-hmm, in a packet.
What number is that?
Number one under the Township Engineers' report.
Okay.
There's a memo from—
Oh, there it is. It's from Dick, not from you. Thank you.
And Mario's letters, too.
Thank you. You heard Mario's proposal, you had the opportunity to review his materials, his letter, and Dick's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Just one question. In Dick's memo, at the end, it says, "I'm happy to report, no base repairs required, and therefore, the $50,000 remains in the above general fund for road repairs." It's really—is it for road repairs, or is it just go back into the general fund?
Just goes back to the—I believe that came from the backup fund that we have. That's where it'll end up at the end of the year. I don't think it was ever transferred physically.
It just goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the—
I have one other thing.
Oh, you said two. Sorry, you mean the Russia.
It's all right. In front of you tonight is the proposed floodplain ordinance. It is based on a model ordinance provided by FEMA and tailored for Dolestown Township with input from township staff, the Planning Commission, and the EAC. Based on recommendations from the Planning Commission, it has been developed as a standalone ordinance. The Township zoning ordinance will also need to be revised to repeal the current floodplain section and to make, you know, various other modifications just for consistency between the zoning ordinance and the new floodplain ordinance. The new ordinance requires the designation of a floodplain administrator and establishes their duties and responsibilities. The township, you know, has designated the zoning officer as this administrator with the code enforcement officer as their alternate. The ordinance maintains the existing overlay concept, and the ordinance does allow for certain residential and non-residential development within the floodplain area if the applicant first obtains a variance from the zoning hearing board, and then meets the certain requirements and standards that are outlined within the ordinance, such as elevating and floodproofing and, you know, other things. Like I said, it allows residential, non-residential development, it allows fill, it allows development which may endanger human life, which is—as long as it's outside the floodway and 50 feet from top of bank. Manufactured homes are also allowed outside of the floodway in the 50-foot zone, recreational vehicles, and substantial improvements to existing structures are also allowed. The ordinance does prohibit certain development within the floodplain, mainly hospitals, nursing homes, jails, prisons, manufactured home parks, manufactured home subdivisions, and new accessory structures. That is consistent with our existing ordinance today. The in-kind replacement of existing accessory structures is also allowed by right with a permit, again, subject to certain conditions being met. What we need this evening is twofold. One is authorization to send this ordinance to FEMA for preliminary approval, and then authorization to advertise the ordinance after receipt of, you know, FEMA approval. As we know, this ordinance needs to be adopted by March 16th of 2015.
Can we do that in two steps?
Sure.
Just authorize that this matter—the ordinance be—draft ordinance be forwarded to FEMA, and then when it returns from FEMA, then we can move to have it advertised? Or is there a time problem here?
You'd have to ask the general—
Depends on how long it takes FEMA to approve it. This is—this part of the ordinance is not a zoning or subdivision ordinance revision, so you don't need to do the 30-day notice and all the other things you normally do. So there's less advertising time. We will have ready the—in fact, it already has been drafted, the modification to the zoning ordinance, so you could authorize just the first step, and then if you find that FEMA is dragging their feet, you may want to come back in early next month and authorize the advertisement, so when it comes, we don't need to wait further.
So they may not be making—they may not be making suggestions as to alterations or—
They probably won't be because it mirrors the model ordinance.
Okay, so it's just a look-see over it, and—
Kind of blessing you get it.
Yeah, kind of pro forma.
Should be.
Yes, I wouldn't expect any—any comment from FEMA.
Well, given that—
I'm sorry, what if the FEMA response comes December 26th, and we don't meet for another two or three weeks? Is that going to put a—as opposed to give in the authorization now to advertise?
I mean, it's your preference. I don't think it makes a material difference, but it's your preference. Might as well just do both, I mean, it's not like it's—
Because we don't have to do any amendments once we—
I'll make a motion—we send this—
We won't advertise it until FEMA comes back. If there are any amendments, we'll bring it back to you.
Oh, I thought—
No, when FEMA comes back with comments and says, "Change this, change this, change this," we'll come back here before we advertise.
Okay, that's what I said.
Right.
Okay.
If they don't make any changes, we'll go and advertise if you want us to do that.
Very good.
So I'll make the first motion, that we send this to FEMA.
Is there a second?
Second. I have one question now. Looking at the Planning Commission comments, there was like seven points that they had in there. Were they built into the ordinance?
Yes, that is in—
I just wanted to confirm.
Copy in front of me.
Very good.
And I just wanted to reiterate that Stephanie and Mario did an excellent job, and so did both boards, you know, Ken's, Kenzie AC, and my planning commission. It was heartening to see the special meetings we had, and the drilling down, and really going through every comment, every period. So I think it was well done, and the township should be happy to have skilled and talented people on their commissions.
Well, good. Is—there's a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, do you want to make the second?
Now, my second motion is that we authorize Stephanie and Jeff to advertise it if the FEMA report comes back with any—without any significant changes. If there is a significant change, and they feel, you know, it has to be addressed to bring it to us, and we'll address it.
Is there a second?
Second.
You go with that one? Go with that, Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anyhow?
That's it.
Thank you, Mario. Who's next? Manager?
I have nothing at this time. Supervisors. Sorry that I just got this to you today. Last meeting, I proposed that the board consider a resolution that I would draft that would address the smoking in public parks throughout the county. We have no smoking in our parks, and there is a county park located within the confines of Dolestown Township boundaries, at least one, and smoking is permitted. It just occurred to us—as occurred to me, and I brought it up last meeting, that it just seems silly, that residents of Bucks County can smoke in public parks where children play and people go for rest and relaxation. So I asked the board if they might consider resolutions that we would address to the County Board of Commissioners, asking them to consider outlawing or prohibiting smoking, possession of any lighted pipe, cigar, cigarette, or other lighted smoking apparatus, and smokeless tobacco included in—within the confines of county parks. So I prepared this resolution, gentlemen, and I'm sorry you just got it yet this morning, but have you had a chance to consider it, and what is your position?
Just a comment about—I thought at the last supervisory meeting, we talked about, would it have more weight if we worked with other municipalities?
We will do that, but I think we need to do—we need to take the action first, in my opinion.
Okay.
And then we'll send this to a facsimile, not this one in particular, but a facsimile where other municipalities can, you know, cut and paste and adopt if they want.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think—I think we need to take this first step, and then ask our brothers and sister municipalities if they would like to join in.
Okay.
And the county might act on just this one resolution, who knows?
Right, okay.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Go ahead.
I don't have any problem with it, but I think that we should go over this and make sure that there's no spelling errors. And I hate to be the one, it's always a pain in the butt, but there's a glaring spelling error. And I realize, Barbara, you're doing it so you get that close vision, but I can't believe—anyway, I amend—I'd like the motion amended to at least go through this and clean up the spelling errors, and—I mean—
I want to know where they are.
It's in the first paragraph, it's in bold print, and it's tobacco, T-O-B-B-A-C-C-O. So, I mean, just looking at it, it jumps out at me, and I—I—I mean, especially if we're going to send this around to other areas. And I'm not saying, Barbara, you know, when you write things, you kind of get lost in it, but—
I know.
There's got to be spell check somewhere.
It's very large.
If not, I think we should develop a spell check so that we can retire it.
All right, all right. Can we pass it anywhere with corrections?
If—if—if the motion's changed for amended with the corrections and check for spelling before it's sent out.
Okay. You accept that amendment? All in favor?
Accept that amendment. Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I think you did call it already. Now?
Just pick out a comment first.
And the other thing that we talked about last meeting was to get on our communication systems, drug prevention and recovery initiative, and getting information outside residents about our drug drop-off, the way we can dispose of prescription drugs, and also to provide resources and links and information that parents and youth may have with regard to addiction and prevention, and what educational opportunities there are around. It is important that we—we—I thought that we get in the forefront of this, is when we talk about health and safety of our residents, when we have three deaths in the last, you know, month and a half of residents in this township from drug, well, drug overdose, that we have a lot more responsibility than just to, you know, rely on the Southeastern Council, and we have a responsibility to be in—the face of our residents. This is what's available, this is what's happening, and here are some resources for you if you have any questions or concerns. Just keep that out in the forefront. So with that, I met with Detective Breslau, who is one of our detectives here, and he has put a lot of work and time into developing programs that he takes on the road, well, some initiatives with regard to making a particular drug available to the people who are suffering from heroin addiction, make it available to them. And that is—that's his initiative, and it's pretty outstanding, the work he's done, the work he's doing on it. But for now, he—he also provided Mommy and Daddy Dearest. This is a PowerPoint that has some very interesting facts in it that might be very helpful to parents in their homes, right in our community, saying, you know, just for an example, what the word "trees" may refer to out of context, the kids are talking about, you know, "Did you see those trees?" "You get those trees," or whatever, "trees" being a euphemism, or, you know, and a comment regarding marijuana, or something like that. So this Mommy and Daddy Dearest PowerPoint presentation made—created by Detective Breslau is very interesting and very helpful, and I think some of these things can be put into little comments and little factoids, if you will, on our website and in our communication systems. That, and also anonymous should be—I'm hoping we're going to work on how to broadcast that, anonymous people. But that's all I wanted to—I wanted to hand out also to Stephanie some links, including Shatterproof, billy.org, the council, of course, How to Save a Life, and the CB Cares—well, CB Cares Educational Foundation, which is big with young people and the drug-free community materials. So that's what I've done so far on that, and want to see some of this stuff, as the board is authorized, get into our communication systems. That's all. That's for me. Sean, do you have anything?
I—
Excuse me, Sean. Just a question about that. Where do you see the program going? I mean, other than, you know, facilitating and making it available on the website and communicating—
That's what I think we're—that's what I think our bit of business is. What Detective Breslau is doing, I think we do—you know, I work with him, I want to work with him outside of this. But for us, I think it's, you know, providing information about prevention and what the recovery system is, you know, helping to break down the stigma, helping to help—help parents educate their young people. As I said last time, 50% of all parents in this—in this community do not speak to their young people about drugs and alcohol. And that's not just me, that's all over the country, and that's directly from the drug czar. And most people die of prescription drug overdose. It's not—not the heroin, or not the the bad stuff that you hear about on the street. And heroin is probably—is, it said, "more prevalent and easier to obtain than a soda out of a vending machine." So—and it is in this community, so we can't ignore it, and it's—and it's bad—for us to ignore it. So that—I think it's just keeping it open on our—on our site, on our—in our newsletter, keeping these links avail—I mean, you know, publishing the links and saying, "Did you know this?" Or, "Here's some information about that." So just keep the communication going.
Yeah, I guess when I—when I think about this, I—one, I applaud you for doing this, but I think it is a worthwhile cause, for sure. But how do we leverage what other groups may have done about this already? And how do we get that experience to make our communication even more effective? How do we work with the borough, or any other township, you know? How do we help? It's—you're right, it's one thing of helping, you know, the township, but is that—it's what I'm talking about, scope here.
We're not reinventing the wheel. I think we're just going to take information that already—
Okay.
—these programs that already exist and making them avail—making them—or publishing them so that they're available.
Okay.
And that, when our residents open our newsletter, they see something about this prevention, education and prevention and recovery, that it's always in the forefront, or it's—it's up here. So they're not thinking that it's happening somewhere else. It's not Warminstor, South Philly, or somewhere else. It's here. It's here, and it's available, and help is available here. And like I said, we're not reinventing the wheel. I don't know any other municipality who's doing this, but it doesn't matter, we can do it.
Yeah, well, I agree with you, and to move—and to get it going, and I support that, I guess I'm just thinking of, is how do we—especially the borough. I mean, how do we communicate that we're going to do this? Because everybody crosses the line, you know? The borough and the township are so close, so how do we—can Stephanie talk to the manager there and say, "We're doing this"? It's just little things.
I've—Phil Ellinger will put it in his—in his system, too. I mean, all I have to do is make a phone call and tell him what we're doing, and provide him the links.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's—that's easily—easily done. No problem. Good idea.
Can I? I think this papier here is great for our website, or on the TV station. This is just basically—this is the most watered-down part of it. This is the start, in my opinion, for the families to have an idea of what's taking place under their own roof. Detective Breslau, my understanding, is working with many different people outside of Dolestown Township to try and take a regional approach, and that's where we're going from that thing. And he's been working with Barb and a couple other delegates from around the community to try and make it more globally. But this is just very basic information, so our parents are aware of what the kids are doing, to help the resident deal with it within their home.
Okay.
And then we have another avenue that we're trying to take to—to try and grasp and see if we can make a resolution and solve the issues.
No, that's good, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Chief.
I did have one question for the chief. Did you notice an increase in drugs being dropped off since we mentioned it at the last meeting?
You know what? People come in and out of there all the time. They literally—they'll come in the front door, dump it, and leave. They don't even come into the front office anymore. But they're—they're in there every day, so to be honest with you, whether or not there's been an increase, I don't know.
Because all of us got—
I think it just—didn't it just make it on the TV last week?
Yeah.
It's only been—
It was last minute.
I know—the photographs were taken of the box last week, so—
We tweeted it.
Okay. Sean, do you have anything?
Only one—one comment, nothing to do with my committees, but rather, I encourage everybody to look. If you haven't read it in the paper yet, or seen it online, and the Shammany Creek's been nominated for River of the Year in PA. It's one of, I guess, five nominees. Only—well, only two are actually rivers that have been nominated, so you say—if you read into it, you understand why. It's been nominated for ecological benefits, or, you know, the environmental benefits, as well as fishing and other tourism aspects. Anyhow, Heritage Conservancy, if you go on their website, I know there's a link, and you can vote up until December 15th, 5:00 PM, to make the Shammany Creek the River of the Year in PA. That's all. So—
Thanks. Ken?
For TAB, we'll cover that later on the agenda. We have something coming about TAB. The only other thing I wanted to mention is really about the roads and bridges, and what Dick was able to do and accomplish this year, and come under budget, so thank you, Dick, for all your guys' hard work and work on that process.
You're welcome.
There's only one last bridge to finish this year that we committed to, and that work is ongoing, right?
That should be actually finished.
Good, very good. It's perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Spent most of my time with the Planning Commission, and most of that's going to be tonight. You're going to hear from the Snyder Track, you're going to hear from the Casabella, and you already heard from Mario on the FEMA flood ordinance, so that's all I have.
Okay, one other thing, I forgot. Today, Stephanie, Ken, and I were guests of the Village Improvement Association, and while there, we picked up a check for $10,000 for our sensory trial. It's our—our goal and our mission with the sensory trial matches beautifully with the mission of the Village Improvement Association, and after our grant application, they thought it would be worthwhile for them to support a pod, and we will make sure that they get all the recognition they deserve. So this is one more bit of business for our sensory trial, so it was a very nice event. Thank you for coming. Okay, back to the—the other thing on our agenda, and I lost my place. Correspondence, thank you. We have a letter of resignation from Amy Mizanty. She has been on our Like and Height Committee for a number of years, but due to her other commitments, she has to resign her position. She wishes everyone well in fulfilling the mission of the Like and Height Committee.
Is there a motion to accept her resignation?
I make a motion, we accept Amy's resignation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To tell her a thank you, and we regret she's leaving. New business, land development plan for the Snyder Track.
First matter is the final minor subdivision plan for the Snyder Track related to tax parcel 9-9-4-1. They are proposing to subdivide this tract into two lots. There are several existing structures on the site, including two dwelling units and certain accessory buildings. They're going to subdivide it such that one lot will contain approximately 14 acres and include the existing two-story house with several accessory buildings, and lot two will be about one acre, and maintain the existing two-story dwelling. The only improvements proposed are a 500-square-foot parking area to be located on lot number two. Site has furnished on Limekiln Road. Plans before you know it were prepared by McGill and Wilson, were dated September 19, 2014, and have no revisions. Your Planning Commission recommended approval on October 27, 2014, subject to certain conditions, and as I usually say, if the board was inclined to approve the plan, I have the conditions ready for your review. Mr. Goldstein represents the applicant. I've shared with him in advance those proposed conditions. I think he was fine with those, but the board wants to get an idea of what they're talking about. I think there's a plan right there, relatively minor matter. Structures are already there.
Okay.
Let's hear your comments.
Okay. Conditions, if appropriate, would be compliance with the comments received from the EAC dated October 20, 2014. Next, compliance with Boucher and James' report dated October 22, 2014, with a grant of the following waivers from the subdivision ordinance. From Section 115320.D18, related to an overall landscaping plan, all of this is because of the fact it's existing, and there's no new construction. Next, from the Section 15334B1, related to landscaping on individual lots. Section 15334B3, we're getting street trees. Next, 15334B6, relating to a landscape conservation plan, because there's no new dwellings. Next, compliance with the Pickering Courts' Somerson Review Letter dated October 7, 2014, with some additional waivers. One, showing features within 400 feet because there's no new dwelling or construction proposed. One, the obligation to widen Limekiln Pike, and the other is from the waiver of having to have a discharge ordinance, or discharge easement, as it naturally discharges. Next, compliance with the Michael Baker Jr. Review dated October 9, 2014. Compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission Report dated October 16, 2014, except that there will be additional waiver associated with that, and that is a waiver from 1532784, because of the driveway arrangement. Two driveways are already there. Next, receipt of all permits and approvals, and last, you have to pay all outstanding fees and expenses incurred by the township in connection with the application. Mr. Goldstein, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the minor sub—excuse me, minor final subdivision plan for the Snyder Track.
A second?
With the conditions outlined by—
As outlined by our solicitor.
By the solicitor. His motion, and the second? Do you accept that amendment, having the conditions?
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
What?
Don't you want to recuse yourself? I mean, your—your property's contiguous to theirs. I—
I don't know.
Your property touches the Snyder Track.
Yeah, I object, sir.
You can recuse yourself, there's three votes to approve it, so—
Three votes, okay. Yeah, for the record, I own a property adjacent to our farm, to their farm, gets it backs up in the back, so—in that case, I recuse myself. I abstain, so the other three can vote.
Okay, motion carries.
It's better that way.
Thank you, board members, Mr. Garten, everybody.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Nice to see you, Ms. Snyder.
The next matter is your consideration of the final plan for Casabella. As you know, the applicant is proposing to subdivide tax parcel 9-4-10-7 into four lots to be served by a cul-de-sac. Plans were prepared by Site Works and Solton's Inc., were dated March 17, 2014, were last revised September 23, 2014. This board approved the preliminary plan on July 15, 2014, subject to various conditions. Your Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to conditions, on October 27, 2014. Again, if the board's inclined to approve the final plan, I have the conditions. I've shared those with Mr. Pizzani. He has no difficulty with those conditions, and depending upon the board's pleasure, This board approved the preliminary plan on July 15, 2014, subject to various conditions. Your Planning Commission recommended approvals subject to conditions on October 27, 2014, and again, if the board's inclined to approve the final plan, I have the conditions. I've shared those with Mr. Pizzani. He has no difficulty with those conditions, and depending upon the board's pleasure, I will either review those conditions or you can get an idea of what's going on with the plan if you're not familiar with it.
Please do.
Conditions, you ready for those?
Yes. Does anyone receive the plan?
Continued compliance with the conditions of preliminary plan approval unless specifically modified by the terms and conditions of final plan. Compliance with the comments received from Michael Baker Jr. dated October 14, 2014. Compliance with the correspondence dated October 14, 2014 from DEP. Compliance with Boucher and James' report dated October 20, 2014. Next, compliance with the zoning associates' correspondence dated October 21, 2014. Next, compliance with Director of Code Enforcement's memorandum dated October 24, 2014. Next, compliance with the Pickering Court's Somersson correspondence dated October 17, 2014. Due now in signing plans, applicant provide detailed plan showing mid-block crossing connection with revised bus stop area. Applicant's request a waiver from Sado Section 15331A5 because he is putting a stormwater basin in a stormwater easement. And lastly, the amount of the fee in lieu of recreation, the fee in lieu of sidewalks to be paid shall be determined pre now and the execution of funding of development and security agreements. Mr. Pizzani, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, I do.
That's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You don't have any conflicts with this one?
No. Not this one. Not this one.
Does your motion include the conditions outlined by the solicitor?
It does, yes. Solicitor said.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll second, and I apologize for the EAC mix-up. I thought you had received that one at one of our Planning Commission meetings, and I later found out you didn't, so I was happy that you were able to get the things with the trees and all that squared away, so I appreciate the lateness of it, and I'll keep a better eye on the switch in the future.
Thank you.
Okay? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda, zoning here, a board application for 70 East Road, Christine Cole.
The board has the application, and the applicant is here with their solicitor, and I believe they would like to make a brief presentation to the board about their proposed application to the zoning hearing board.
You say you're recusing because you have interest.
Yes.
Cool. Yes, it's presented. You do have a vote.
For the record, two members of this board are recusing themselves from any discussion or voting on this matter.
And please identify who's recusing himself for the record, if you would.
I'm recusing myself.
Sean Twohill's recusing himself.
I'm Barbara Lyons, I'm an adjacent property owner.
Mr. Van Lubene, as you can imagine, with only two members here that can participate in this matter, we can't take any official action one way or the other tonight on what our position is, so please understand that.
I do understand that. The reason we were here is we felt that it was appropriate to give the board some background information on the application that would not be readily apparent from a review of the form that was filed with the board. And I'm happy to have this opportunity, and I appreciate the time that you've given us tonight. The property that is involved in this application, and your package has a copy of the plan that we filed with the zoning hearing board application, although this is a colored version, is a 4.949, almost four, nine and a half acre, four and a half, or 4.9 acres, almost five-acre property on East Road. It is a property which contains the house and barn that were the home of Oscar Hammerstein from the time he bought the property in 1940, when at that time it was a larger property until he died in 1960. The property was nominated in 1988 and received by, and placed on the National Register of Historic Places. I took a look at your 2007 open space plan, and I noted that it's on your list, of course, of historic and cultural resources, and if I read the list correctly, one of only three properties in the township is on the National Register, according to your list. So I think it's property worth preserving. I know your zoning ordinance, and you've taken some proactive steps to encourage the preservation of historic properties. We actually think that you have done a good job in this case by including in your ordinance your use C8, which provides the opportunity for a special exception in the R1 district for a community facility, cultural center like we're proposing here. And that's the general nature of the application that we have filed. That is for a special exception. We've described in great detail in the application how we believe we meet those requirements. There are variances, I'll touch on them briefly. What I wanted to make the board aware of, and we've already been through some of this with your staff, who've been very accommodating and having some preliminary meetings with us, this property is currently owned by Christine Cole. She bought this property from Mr. Twohill in 2007, and at that time, some of you may remember, Mr. Twohill had been processing a four-lot subdivision of this property. He did, in fact, retain a right to repurchase two of the lots. One lot would have the house, one lot the barn, and then there were two additional lots in the rear of the property. So when Ms. Cole brought the property in 2007, Mr. Twohill retained the right to purchase those two lots. So one of the things that had to be done before we could file with the zoning hearing board was to enter into an agreement with Mr. Twohill, so I think it's appropriate that he recused himself. It's also important, I think, to know that that subdivision still has an approval, and it still could be finalized by the simple act of posting the financial security to have the plan recorded. So the plan is still viable, and I think that's important when you consider this application and when the zoning hearing board considers it, it's certainly going to be a factor that we're going to point out to them. The real party and interest behind this application is Oscar Hammerstein Highland Farm. That's a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation. It's been approved for 501(c)(3) charitable organization status by the IRS. And this project, the people in the front row here have been working on this for more than three years now. That's the first time we're here. That's not usual, me, I usually tell my clients, well, let's get the sketch plan, we'll go in there and see what they think of it. These folks, I think, probably did it the right way. They started by determining, trying to determine, number one, how could the property be preserved long-term? What steps would be necessary? Was it viable to keep it exactly as the way it is? Was it necessary to come up with a concept to generate some revenue to go with it to support the activities that they wanted to further? They, as I said, they formed the nonprofit, they obtained their 501(c)(3) status, they then went out to raise some funds, and they raised over $100,000, which they then devoted to having a renovation and market study of this property done. That study was completed in 2013. The concept for the, I'll call it the redevelopment, although it's actually the preservation of this property along with some redevelopment, is a result of that study. Essentially, what that gave them was the confidence to know that if they could obtain the approvals that they needed to implement this, well, I'll call it a master plan, that this project could work long-term financially with the result that the house and barn could be preserved intact. I wanted, I mentioned the subdivision plan for a reason. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to talk to Jeff Marshall, who did the application to put this property on the National Register. And it's Jeff's opinion that the buildings, the house and the barn, need to be preserved together, that it's unlikely that the historic significance of this property could be preserved if they were separated. And of course, if somebody buys the barn, the likelihood is they transform it into a residence, which is certainly not going to preserve the historic significance of the properties. So we think that our application and the hard work that these folks have done provides a unique opportunity to preserve a unique property. And I think one of the things, the reasons I put this larger property up here, the aerial is to put it into context.
Sorry.
No problem.
So sorry.
Property is its current size as a result of the, partially as a result of the condemnation of the property for the bypass. The property originally extended across the bypass, and this way encompassed part of the property, was now later acquired by Doylestown Country Club. Barbara's property was part of this property, the farm originally, back when I was a kid, I remember, because the manager of the farm was a good friend of my father's, so I visited this farm many times back in the 50s. So I remember when it looked like a farm, and there's not much left. And I think what's left, according to the report that Jeff Marshall did, is the part that has the most significance, and that's the house and the barn. And the reason for the significance, of course, is that Mr. Hammerstein lived there, and he wrote there. The zoning hearing board application, just so you know what we're asking for, we have asked for a special exception to use the property as a private organization slash community center. Now, the definition, in case you haven't read it recently, is a building and related facilities used for fraternal, educational, social, cultural, or recreational activities owned or operated by a corporation, association, or group of individuals, or by an educational, philanthropic, governmental, or religious institution. There are some other criteria, but we feel that we fit right into that definition, and for that reason have the right to seek the special exception. We have asked for some variances. One is that one of the qualifications for non-residential uses in the R1 is the five-acre minimum lot size, and as I said, we have 4.949 acres, what I consider to be de minimis. Nevertheless, it is a variance that we requested. The ordinance also has a section that says that in the R1 district, you're not to have more than one principal building or use on a lot. There are already two principal buildings, if you consider the barn's bigger than the house, I don't know whether you consider that principal or accessory, but there are already two buildings on this lot. In that respect, I think is already non-conforming. We are constructing an educational center, thanks theater building, which is shown on the plan, and this colored version, you can see it easier, it's the brown building here, that will be connected to the barn. Arguably, it could be considered a separate building, it could be considered part of the other building, but nevertheless, we've asked for a variance. Parking was an issue of concern, is an issue of concern to our folks. 128 parking spaces would be required for the use that you see described on this plan. We're proposing, instead of 128 parking spaces, 89 automobile spaces and 88 buses spaces. And if you have questions about that, we're going to be going into some detail about that when we make our presentation to the zoning hearing board, but I don't want to take your whole night unless you have questions that you want to ask of the folks who are here. And we have the impervious surface variance. One of the things we've tried to balance here is the size of the facility, the amount of parking that we think we reasonably need to preserve as much of the green as we can, but certainly we do need a variance to do what we're proposing to do here. Actually, we need a variance if you propose to do the same thing just in the, without the museum, without the new building, but at least according to my calculations, if you called it a museum and didn't have the theater with it, then there's a different parking standard, and you can get up over 300 spaces, the way I calculated it. So to some extent, parking, as we know, is always really a question of how it's going to be operated by the operator and how they intend to proceed. The three folks here in the front row are Will Hammerstein, who is a grandson of Oscar II, and obviously has a great deal of interest in making this project work, and I'm going to ask Will to say a few words when I'm finished, which will be very briefly. Next to Will is Christine Cole, who owns the property. Christine is also very actively involved in this project. And next to her is Christine Lewis, who is also, has a theater background, I don't, I'm not going to try to tell them the whole background, Christine, but she's got an active theater program and is very interested in this. And these are the three folks who actually incorporated the fictitious name that you see on the cover of your handout tonight. They've been working hard now for close to three years on this project. Four years? Sorry, Will. Sorry. So what we were hoping is, we'd like your support, we were hoping at a minimum you would not direct your solicitor to attend the meeting. If you can't take a formal vote, that's probably what's going to happen, but that you won't see sending someone. We're certainly, we'd welcome your attendance at the meeting. We hope to, we present, we'll probably have a long presentation to make because there are a lot of pieces of this application that we want to be sure your zoning hearing board is familiar with before they're asked to vote. And if you'll indulge us, Will would just like to take a couple minutes and address you.
Thanks, John. Hello, my name is Will Hammerstein. I'm a George School graduate, and I'm an attorney, and I'm the grandson of Oscar Hammerstein II. If the zoning hearing board application that we have filed is approved, we will finally be able to achieve the two goals we set out to achieve more than four years ago, I think. The first is to preserve and protect my grandfather's farm for future generations, and where he wrote some of the best-loved musicals of all time. And second is to create a cultural institution that will add an exciting new dimension to Doylestown and be something that everyone can be proud of. Oscar wrote Oklahoma, Carousel, South Pacific, there's a lot of them, and this is only a partial list, so I get tongue-tied. State Fair, The King and I, and The Sound of Music are the ones I'd like to let you know about at Highland Farm. These shows include songs like Oh What a Beautiful Morning, and Might As Well Be Spring, and My Favorite Things. Oh What a Beautiful Morning was directly inspired by the landscape around Highland Farm. There was a beautiful meadow, there was a barn, and there was a cornfield across the street. Oscar drew directly on these, so Highland Farm isn't just a place where he lived, it's a place that fed his creativity. The song, It Might As Well Be Spring, earned him his second Academy Award at Highland Farm. There's no question that these songs will be sung for as long as people sing. It's a very weighty legacy that we share, as my grandfather and you as Doylestown people. It's yours almost as much as, almost as much as it is of mine, no, it's all of ours, it's all of ours. We can all be proud. Another show he wrote at the farm, and this is just an interesting little trivia fact, was a Major TV version of Cinderella, which drew an audience of 110 million viewers in 1957. The biggest Super Bowl audience was 114 million last year. The difference is, in 1957, the country was half the size. If the NFL wanted to generate the same kind of excitement for the Super Bowl, they would have to double their audience. Let that sink in. They would also have to clean up their act because they're not exactly winning fans these days, and Oscar's reputation was spotless and will remain spotless because the history's already, the books have closed on him. And so he will always be a role model for kids. And that's something that we can do here. Now, to attract visitors and donors, we need to present programming that inspires both of them. We need to bring them in. So as John alluded to, we want to restore the historic house so that we can give house tours. We want to convert the barn to use as museum exhibit space where we can present displays on Oscar, his father, who was the father of Times Square, all of his collaborators, his mentor, Otto Harbach, his protege, Stephen Sondheim, the Doylestown zone. And then attached to the barn, we want to attach a small theater space, which you can think of as a part of the museum, where we will exhibit Oscar's work. What good does it, you know, would you take someone through Picasso's house and show him an empty studio and not show him a piece of artwork? You know, you would have to have an art gallery in that case. Well, in this case, we've got a guy who wrote shows. We need to show them. At the new educational, so the new educational center and the theater are key components of this, both philosophically and from a fundraising point of view. The revenue that will be generated will enable us to preserve and maintain the property. A B&amp;B will never preserve and maintain that property. And we also know that the issues that are raised can be intelligently resolved, traffic and parking. We can figure this out, you know, these should not be the reasons why, you know, these things should not get in the way of something of this kind of weight being done. Another thing you should keep in mind is that Oscar was a good neighbor. My dad always told a story about how Oscar had a system of color-coded flags that he would put out by the road so that to signal to neighborhood kids whether it was okay to use the tennis court, whether it was okay to swim in the pool, or whether to stay away because he was working and he needed to concentrate and he needed quiet. And so this paints a picture of a guy who was engaged with his adopted community. And so this paints a picture of a guy who was engaged with his adopted community, and there was generosity and engagement. He wasn't someone who parachuted in from New York so he could get away from, you know, so he could wall himself off from people. No, he was a member of this community. Now, he was also described as a cock-eyed optimist, so I hate to conclude on a down note, but John's already prepared you for it. But it's critical for everyone to understand, and we can't say it enough, that if we are unable to obtain these approvals, it will be a virtual death sentence for Highland Farm. Because not only will the barn fall down and that context be lost, but it is likely that the property will be divided up into at least three parts, if not four parts, and then the house and the pool will be sitting on a postage stamp resembling nothing, the 72-acre farm, the beautiful 72-acre farm, what it used to be. And it would also foreclose any future use of any substance or interest in the future. This is it. This is the time to do this, before it's too late. So, we have spent four years and about $150,000 on professional studies and other expenses to find a workable solution. We feel like we've done our homework, and we feel like we've found a really exciting solution, and now we need your help. So on behalf of our team, our donors, our many supporters, and Oscar himself, I ask you to please support our project and our application to the zoning hearing board. Thank you.
That's all we wanted to cover tonight, although if any of the board members have questions, we're certainly willing to entertain them.
Well, I have a couple of them, and, and let's get right to it. I mean, John, you know, the impervious that you're looking for is, what, two and a half times what is there today? That's significant.
It is.
Okay, that's a big, big hurdle that, you talk about meeting somewhere in the middle. I don't know where you're going to meet in the middle, you're a long ways away, you're two and a half times what is there today. The second thing, talk about 89 parking spaces and eight buses, but you don't think it's going to impact traffic? I have a, I have a problem, well, figuring that out, maybe there's some kind of thing you're going to show, show us later on, but eight buses alone trying to make that turn and the traffic plus 89 cars, am I missing something?
Well, you're assuming that this is going to be something every day, that you're going to have these buses in and out, and people in and out.
I didn't make that assumption.
Well, I'm assuming that you did, because that's not going to be an everyday occurrence, where we're going to have that kind of traffic.
I didn't make that assumption. Let's pick Friday night.
Okay.
I assume you're going to be open on Friday night?
Yep.
Do you think 89 cars and eight buses is not going to be a traffic issue?
I think, I think that we'll be able to prove, we do have land development here, presumably. I'm assuming you're going to form the conclusion that if we build, in addition to that building, we have land development. And in land development, we'll have to address traffic issues, we have to address, assuming we get that far, the impervious surface is always, to my mind, Mr. Colau, is an issue of stormwater management more than it is anything else. You have districts in this township that permit 50% impervious. What we're asking for doesn't exceed what is permitted in suddenly growth or zoning districts. It becomes a question of stormwater management, in my view, and we're going to have to demonstrate that we can meet it. If we can't, we are not entitled to land development approval. But we don't get to that point, we don't even get to the traffic management issues, in our view, until we have the special exception in place. That's, that's the threshold step. We didn't, we're not, these folks have been through with me the steps that they're going to have to take. I haven't told them that they have an easy path. I haven't told them that they have a slam dunk at the zoning hearing board, but they have to take one step at a time, just as they've started and spent $150,000 without even coming and addressing the zoning upfront, because they wanted to do their homework. If it didn't make sense, they didn't want to come here and present a plan, they didn't want to go to the zoning hearing board and waste the time, if they didn't want to do a land development plan and get approval and not be able to find the financing that they need to do the project. We have to step once at a time. And bottom line is, we, we know that. We, we understand that there are, that the impervious surface is a significant variance. Parking, frankly, is less so, but if we put more parking on the site where we could probably accommodate 129 cars, then we have a bigger impervious surface problem. So we've tried to balance. We tried to do an assessment reasonably of what they will require in order to do this properly, and we do think it can be done without a significant impact. Now, the stormwater management, we have to prove that. That's something we know. But I think that's the impervious surface issue, not the question of the fact that it's double what the ordinance permits in this district. I mean, this is not an entirely residential neighborhood, as you know, from the context, you know, you just look across the street. It's got an office complex. I mean, that's more than 20% impervious. So, I mean, it's context, that's.
The other thing, and, John, you and I go back many, just call me Rick, I, that's, the height of the building is to be determined. You know you've got certain height requirements.
We know that. We haven't asked for a variance, there's a reason for that. We know we're going to have to bring. Yeah, Will, go ahead.
The position of.
I have to take the microphone.
If you, if you look at where the proposed addition is, the, the natural grade is downhill. Right now, there's a tennis court there. So, at the top of the hill, we can have the, the audience, right, the backs, the seats in the back. At the bottom of the hill, we can have the stage with the double height. With the stage, you need, say, 20 feet high for the proscenium, and then another 25 feet above it for scenery and then rigging. That would be below the ceiling height of the barn. We can, we can work that out with, with the ceiling height.
Did you consider noise and hours of operation on, I'll pick on Friday night again, since it seems to be an appropriate time?
Yeah, I'm going to fall back on the, the Oscar was a good neighbor legacy that we are duty-bound to uphold. Whatever we are required to do to continue that legacy of being a good neighbor, that's what we have to do. So if there's a curfew, we work within the curfew.
I asked Wilson, I asked Wilson those same questions, and, you know, for example, are you going to be having outdoor events, are you going to have loudspeakers or PAs to say, you know, people come? The answers I've been getting are all no. I expect that the zoning hearing board will drill us on those same kinds of concerns, frankly, when they talk about the special exception criteria, so.
Could you expand a little bit more on this new structure and what the educational programs mean? I mean, I read it in the document, there was, I think I do, but then I really didn't. So, and what would the, and what would the, what would the daily operation look like?
Okay, I've been running a theater arts center for 25 years in this community. What would be happening, we'd be teaching musical theater classes, acting classes, dance classes, and the shows that we'd be doing would be Oscar Hammerstein shows. So the kids would actually not maybe be in the shows, but they'd be seeing top, top performers performing the things they're learning about. There is such a rich historic community here in theater that I think a lot of people aren't aware of, and I know my kids weren't aware of it until I started teaching them. So that's what we would want to do, is to establish a school there that the kids would be learning about musical theater.
So is it, is it the learning, or is it you will also then conduct shows?
It would be both.
Is that what, it's both?
It would be both.
Okay.
And of course, the shows, the classes wouldn't be going on when the shows are going on, so, but the kids would be able to see these shows. All right. And there'll be, there'll also be adult classes, so some of the people might be in the, the shows also, but we're not sure of that yet. We're still working on putting that together. It is not in stone, and we're finding out our variances and what we can do in order to make it work in the community. But our dream is to have an educational system.
So the educational program, would that be running every day? Would the house be open for tours every day? I mean, what's, how do you see?
First of all, some of the house tours can be by appointment, which there are house tours in the United States that do that, they would have to make an appointment. Yeah, you can talk about that, yeah. And, yeah, the classes, the classes would be on demand. I mean, I don't, I don't think we would probably have classes every day, I would wish, but we wouldn't have the facility to do so, or the, or, because we can't have classes when the shows are going on, obviously. So, it would have to be both.
Okay, as to the house tours, there, when we start, and again, you know, we, we couldn't afford the consultant that had the crystal ball, so we have to, so we're, you know, we're guessing with everyone else, but hopefully it's an educated guess. But we would love to have an open-door policy to begin. If it were to turn out that we were overrun with people who wanted to do these tours, Christine and I, like, two, three years ago, we went to visit a place called Ten Chimneys in Wisconsin, out in the middle of nowhere, Wisconsin, and they, they do house tours, it's the, it's the Lunt's, Lunt and Fontaine. It was their summer house, they trained Lawrence Olivier and all these, you know, great actors there. And they do house tours by appointment only. So they do, it's 12 people a tour, they have everyone park away from the house, they get in a van that fits 15 people, they take them over, they sit them down in the house, they do a little video, then they do a tour of the house, they put them on the van, and they take them right back to the visitor's center. So, that's, if it, if it comes to that, you know, and that would be a great problem to have, there are creative solutions that, that we don't have to invent, that they're, they're implemented, and we also have a, a good relationship. The guy who basically created Ten Chimneys, he's, he's a friend of this project, and, you know, when we, when we get closer to, you know, implementing, or if we ever run into any problems, he's a resource to us. And we have so many other resources. I mean, we, that's one thing. You know, I've been talking about this for a long time to a lot of different people, and I'm telling you, everybody, everybody wants to help. They all want to help. There is, you just, I cannot describe the amount of goodwill that is out there for Oscar Hammerstein.
I mean, in the entertainment community too, both here and in New York. I mean, I just met with the manager for Hugh Jackman, because he's doing a show on Broadway, and she said he would be willing to help us, you know, raise money, and, you know, honorary board member. I mean, so we have a huge backing from everyone.
I don't want to beat it to death. Obviously, I think you're a long ways away from what I look, I'm looking for in a community I believe is looking for, and I'm, I'm glad the solicitor's going to go. I'd be glad to attend the zoning hearing in opposition, because I think this is too much in too small a place, and you're trying to accomplish, it's too much. So I won't beat it to death, we'll save for another day.
There's not going to be another, yeah. There's not another day for the farm.
Is there a suggestion?
If this is, if, if we get denied, you know, Sean owns, Sean has been incredibly patient, you know, and we're really, yeah, I'm grateful. He shakes his head, he's modest, I'm grateful, but how long can we ask him to hold off before he's, before he gets his money out of his property?
I prefer not to answer that question.
It was a rhetorical question.
But do you have a suggestion how, I mean, that we're up for suggestions on how you think we can make this work? I mean, there, it is, there's a bypass there, and then there's also a, a business, shopping center, now shopping and business office across the way, so it isn't all residential.
Yeah, the, the character of the neighborhood has been changing for quite a long time, for decades.
Yeah, I live around here.
Yeah. Well, we, we feel like that we aren't, you know, departing so greatly from the direction it's going, and this is for such a great cause.
I understand all that, I gave you my opinion, and if nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you.
There won't be any decision made tonight.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If I can suggest a zoning officer that we do have the solicitor attend the zoning hearing board meeting, which I believe is scheduled for the 15th, have him put in appearance, listen to the testimony provided, and come back to the board when we have our full complement, and at that time, the board can take an official position on the application at that point. But that would be my recommendation to the board at this point in time, and.
We'll leave it at that, then. Okay?
That's fine. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Next item on the agenda, Doylestown Township Community Advisory Board, they want to revise the town resolution and member composition.
Certainly legally can appoint non-residents to the.
That was my question, I had an answer, and thank you. What, how do you, how do you feel? I mean, you're, does the TAB group recommend this?
Yes. The, the TAB group, they, they've worked their tails off, you know, we've got three people in that group, and, today, and when you look at what types of work and how much work they're doing today versus when the resolution was put in place, we're not just doing more work, we're doing different types of work, which require a different skillset.
Anonymous people.
Pardon me?
Anonymous.
And, yeah, so we need to grow that group a little bit by two, that's what our best guess is, and look for people with a more, with an expanded skillset, and to be able to keep doing, providing the service that we, that we're being, that that group is being asked to do for the township, so. Obviously, I fully support this recommendation.
So you would have for your next agenda, a resolution to modify your earlier resolution to add two additional members to the group and authorize the board to appoint non-residents to that, being the two additional members.
Okay, so do it.
Staggering.
Yep. Staggered.
Staggering in terms.
Yeah, it had to be laid out nicely. Just push the button, sorry.
You locked us in?
I think we just.
I'll bring it back for your formal consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, that's it. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, December 16th. Great gift ideas, movie tickets, and you can save money by buying them here, Regal, Edward, and United Artists Theaters, and then help build King, the Kingdom and Kit Castle for a, buy a brick for a loved one, and I believe there are $125, and you can get that information on savecastle.org. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Adjourned.
Thank you, good night. Yes, we adjourned.